Welcome everyone to the meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners for June 22nd, 2021. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners Apter. Bartlett. Best.
Here.
Duffy. Lazara.
She's here, I see her.
You're muted Sandy.
And Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapur.
Here.
Announcement of the open public meetings law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including in the annual notice, adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
Please stand for the invitation. And the pledge of allegiance.
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love. Be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord, amen.
Amen. Commissioner Duffy, please lead us in a pledge of allegiance.
Be my honor Director, I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence, remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces, and the over 600,000 Americans who have died from COVID-19, especially the 1,700 residents of Passaic County. Thank you. Have a motion to approve the minutes of January 8th, 2021.
A motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Deputy Director James, roll call.
I think you're muted Lou.
That would, that would help, thank you. I'm sorry. County Commissioners Apter. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Okay, next on the agenda is approval of proclamations.
Remove it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, seconded by Commissioner Bartlett, I think, roll call.
County Commissioners Apter. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapur.
Yes. Administrator's report.
Thank you Director, we have a pretty packed agenda on my portion of the agenda here this evening, and first is some awards of scholarships by the New Jersey Association of Counties in conjunction with some of their benefactors. So I know we have John Donadio, President of the New Jersey Association of Counties, Micah, we let him into the room?
Yep, he is presently in with us.
Okay, there's Mr. Donadio. I don't know whether or not we have our President, Commissioner Semino from Mercer County, who is the President of NJAC this year, on with us as well. If not, I'll turn it over to John Donadio, but maybe just a moment of personal privilege here, just to commend Mr. Donadio on the work that he is doing as Executive Director of the New Jersey Association of Counties. He has brought this organization up to a level that in my 18 years involved in the organization has never been seen. We are a player when it comes to bills that negatively affect the taxpayers of not only Passaic County, but New Jersey, and John has really brought this organization to a level of respect that he makes calls and we get meetings, and you know, just a couple of weeks ago on the early voting bill, we had a meeting with the Governor's Front Office, Chief of Staff, and really John deserves a lot of credit for the work that he is doing on behalf of the taxpayers of the state of New Jersey. So without any further ado, I will introduce Mr. Donadio, who will talk a little bit about these scholarships, and then we'll turn it over to Commissioners to make the presentations. So John, welcome to Passaic County, even if it is virtually.
It is, and I'd love to be there in person, and thank you, Mr. Donova, for your kind words. You have me blushing actually, I appreciate you saying that, and honestly, you know, we're only as strong as an advocate because of your tremendous support of the organization and all the great work that you do, and all of the professional staff that you have in Passaic County that regularly help the organization as a resource and as an advocate. So we wouldn't be as strong as an organization as we are now if it were not for you, and again, all the terrific professionals in Passaic County. So thank you for your continued support, I appreciate it a great deal. With respect to the NJAC Foundation, I can tell you by far, this is the easiest, and not the easiest, but the thing that I enjoy the most, in that we get to provide and help people with their education and the pursuit of their educational goals by providing scholarships to county vocational technical school graduates who are continuing their education right here in the state of New Jersey, and I'm particularly proud of the fact that because of the generosity of companies like Investors Bank, PSENG, and SHI, over the past decade, the NJAC Foundation has awarded over $400,000 to over 700 county vocational technical school graduates, again, continuing their education right here in the state of New Jersey. We've got a terrific group of nominees and recipients today, and just want to congratulate them. Thank Investors Bank, SHI, and PSENG again for the continued generosity, and again, Mr. D, and all of the Board of County Commissioners for their support. So thank you.
Thank you, John. Director, I'll turn it back to you.
Okay. It's not 6:15 yet.
No.
Presentations of the scholarships.
Mr. Donova, could you just handle that, because I did not print that out too. Can you give it to the, Best is handling the first two?
Yep.
Okay. Bob, I'll just do it. County Commissioner Best, can you take over with your first two presentations?
Unfortunately Lou, I don't have it in front of me, I was unable to print it out, I'm taking a meeting on my phone right now.
Okay, alright.
Hey Lou, I think I have them here now.
Yes, can you, well, County Commissioner Duffy, can you please do three and four, Lauren and Brianna, and I will I will have someone else do the first two, okay?
That's fine Lou.
Thank you.
It's my honor and pleasure to announce Brianna Lindino from Halden. And Brianna, can you hear me alright? You good? Can you hear me right?
Loud and clear, sir.
Brianna is a wonderful young lady who always puts her family before herself. Brianna's dad unfortunately passed away when she was only nine. As a result, her mom works and she has stepped up to help take care of her brother. She loves doing this and feels it has taught her many life skills. She enjoys her younger brother and working with young kids in general. She has volunteered over 180 hours as a cheer advisor for Manchester Junior Falcons, Little Football Team. Brianna also has a creative side, she loves music, editing videos, she has become an entrepreneur and sells clothes online. As you can see, she has a very electric personality. Sorry to make you, we're awarding her $500, I wish her the very best Brianna Lindino. Recipient is Lauren Melendez, and she's from Patterson. Her recommendation is that Lauren Melendez is one of those students who stands out from the crowd. Her demeanor, ambition, independence makes her the perfect candidate for success. She has a strong work ethic and intensely dedicated towards her educational endeavors. Lauren currently holds a 4.07 GPA and is enrolled in our Academy of Finance shop. She has potential earn up to 27 credits upon graduation. She also is getting an award of $500, I wish them both the very best in the future.
Okay, and then Sandy's going to handle Emmanuel and Tasima.
The first one is Emmanuel Soriano, and he's a student at Passaic County Technical Institute. Recommendation remarks, you know, it said that Emmanuel is a respectful kid, considerate of others, diligent, reliable, and a good listener. He strives to make the most of the moment and uses his time wisely, often volunteering to help fellow students. Giving of himself in a way that makes a positive impact in the lives of others is very fulfilling for him. Emmanuel is the oldest sibling in his family and strives to lead by example. He wants to provide a good path for his younger siblings to follow. Therefore, he tries to be careful with his words and actions. With great anticipation of being the first in his family to attend college, he is excited about the opportunity and wants to make his family proud. Information technology, cybersecurity is his intended college major. He's sure to find a job real quick with that. Emmanuel finds the field interesting and recognizes that technology is more constant in our lives. He is looking forward to further exploration of his career option. Emmanuel has demonstrated a desire for self-improvement and a willingness to work hard to achieve his goals. The scholarship will help contribute to his long-term goals. It will allow him to focus on his study and his career endeavors. We wish Emmanuel the best of luck in furthering his educational career at Montclair State University in the program of informational technology. And I have his award right here. He's the first one. And then we have Tash Nima Ramon. Tashi Nima is part of the Project Lead the Way program at PCTI. It's an engineering program that she's really very active in. She is well-prepared for post-secondary education in engineering, since she is taking the most rigorous curriculum available. Listen to this, Intro to Engineering, Digital Electronics, Principles of Engineering, Systems Integrated Manufacturing, Calculus III, Multi-V variable AP Calculus, AP Physics, Electricity and Magnetism, AP Physics C, Mechanics, and Chemistry Honors. Her academic standing shows an impressive 4.24 GPA and a class rank of 52 out of 834 students. Tash Nima has been a member of the Engineering Club where she worked vigorously in designing, building, and testing an underwater robotic device for the sea perch competitions offered throughout our region. Sea perch is an innovative underwater robotics program that equips teachers and students with resources they need to build an underwater remotely operated vehicle in an in-school or out-of-school setting. Tash Nima is a highly motivated student who will be pursuing a mechanical engineering degree at the New Jersey Institute of Technology. We wish both students the best of luck in their endeavors. I'm sure they're both find jobs real quick. And here's her certificate.
County Commissioner Lazara.
Yes.
We both, actually, we have Emmanuel and Tasima on with us, and want to, if you would like to invite them to give some remarks if they would like to.
Oh sure, I guess ladies first. Tash Nima, do you have any remarks or anything you'd like to share with us?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I would just like to say thank you for this recognition, and I'm really grateful that I was able to get this opportunity and get this scholarship, and I know it's going to be really helpful in college. Thank you so much.
Yeah, every dollar counts. And Emmanuel.
Hello?
Hi, we can hear you.
Okay, I would just like to say thank you and for the opportunity and for being nominated. And I'm just really grateful that this is going to help me further achieve my long-term goal. So thank you.
Oh, I'm sure it will. With your drive and the financial support you're getting, I'm sure you're going to go places, both of you.
And so everyone is aware, the four recipients are going to three great institutions. Emmanuel will be going to Montclair State University. Tasima and Brianna are both going to NJIT, and Lauren is going to Seton Hall.
Yeah, great schools.
Jersey's.
We'll see you tomorrow at the graduation.
Oh, we will. Look for us. I'll be there too. I think Commissioner Bartlett's going to be there at six, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
So next on the agenda, I think is something we all can, Mr. Donadio, thank you so much, you're welcome to leave unless you want to be tortured and watch the rest of the meeting. Next on my agenda is something that I think we all can agree, was probably very underappreciated until this last 16 or 17 months, and that's public health officers, not only here in Passaic County, but throughout the country and the world. So we thought it was a great idea that we recognize all of the work that are the public health officers who represent municipalities here in Passaic County have done to help protect the county, save lives, and proudly got us to our goal of vaccinating, at least with one shot, 270,000 residents of Passaic County, which we have hit that goal. I could tell you, having, you know, worked closely with some of these health officers, and certainly our health officer Charlene, it has given me a whole new respect for the career and for the dedication that each one of them have, and each one of them have shown to the residents of Passaic County. And I know all the Commissioners feel the same way, they've really done a great job, so we thought at the very least that we could do is recognize what they have done over the past 17 or 18 months. So with that, I'm going to turn it back to the Director, and I know we have some proclamations of each, and if we have representatives of the town that they represent, Micah will invite them into the meeting as well.
And actually, we were going to, the Director was going to have the Chair of the Health and Human Services, Lazara, on, take the master sound ones for this.
Thank you for correcting me Lou.
I was not correcting you.
We'll ask Commissioner Lazara, who is Chair of Health and Human Services, to take over this portion of the agenda.
Thank you, thank you. So, you know, I did a little research before we started our meeting, and I went back. I have a whole file on my computer of emails that have to do with the COVID. And my very first email that I got was on February 29th, 2020. It was from our own Health Director, Charlene Gungill. February 29th, and in that first email, it mentioned that the first death in the United States had taken place, and we better buckle up because we have quite a fight ahead of us. And just from a county point of view, by March 8th, we had implemented visitor restrictions in our building, so it wouldn't pass, you know. I can't say enough about our health officers and the job that they've done. We've worked so hard to be prepared for this pandemic, and nobody knew what was coming, and our health officers took the bull by the horns, and starting off with testing, you know, it was set up in all the different municipalities throughout Passaic County. We had ours up at William Patterson. You went into emergency response mode, trying to meet the needs of all the poor, it's almost like PTSD, like going back thinking about what you guys have done and what you all went through. You know, sometimes I think that we just can't thank you all enough for what you've done. I actually have the honor of introducing our first honoree from Clifton, and that would be John Beagle. So John, I would like to read your proclamation into the record.
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic wishes at this time to recognize John E. Beagle III, the Health Officer for the Cities of Clifton and Passaic and the Township of Little Falls. And whereas John E. Beagle III began his public health career as an intern at the Clifton Health Department in January of 1989, shortly before graduating from Montclair State University that May with a Bachelor of Science in Health Education with a concentration in community health, and later earned his Master's Degree in Environmental Health Management from his alma mater in 2000. Throughout his tenure with the City of Clifton Health Department, he served as Sanitary Inspector and Senior Registered Environmental Specialist before being promoted to the Director of Human Services/Health Officer in 2004 for the City of Clifton, providing Health Officer Administrative Services for the Cities of Clifton and Passaic, as well as the Township of Little Falls. And whereas during his tenure, he has proven his dedication and concern for the well-being of the citizens throughout the County of Passaic through his notable acts, which include purchasing a health mobile for the City of Passaic and creating a local MRC, Medical Reserve Corps, called Crocs, Clifton residents on call, and also participated in numerous emergency preparedness drills and outbreak investigations during the Salmonella, Coasterium P, and Scabies epidemics. During the COVID-19 pandemic, he provided assistance with mobile testing during the peak in April 2020 and vaccinations as soon as they were made accessible to the public. Mr. Beagle's efforts, along with other health professionals, hard work, have helped the City of Clifton reach a total of 14,613 administered doses as of June 11th, 2021. And whereas John E. Beagle III is a most valued and respected associate and friend of many persons in Passaic County, which is evidenced by his significant contributions he has made, befitting the citizenry of the County of Passaic. So now for, now therefore, let it be proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly recognizes John E. Beagle for his genuine interest and concern for the well-being of the citizens of the County of Passaic, and be it further proclaimed that this Board extends its sincere best wishes to him for continued success in his role as Health Officer for the Cities of Clifton, Passaic, and the Township of Little Falls, and Director of Human Services for the City of Clifton Health Department. John, we thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Would you like to share any words of wisdom?
Yeah, I just wanted a few thank yous, I want to thank all the Commissioners for this honor, it's really a tremendous honor for myself and my colleagues to be honored by the Commissioners, so thank you, and thank you for your support during this, these crazy times, it really means a lot. I want to thank Mr. Donova and Dr. Gungill, or my buddy Charlene, for their leadership during this pandemic, because I have to truly say, Passaic County to me was number one, how we communicated throughout the whole process. That's what makes, you know, us get through this, relying on each other and the communications that we have done throughout this. So thank you, Mr. Donova and Dr. Gungill. I want to thank the Clifton, Passaic, Little Falls mayors and council and administration during, with the support that they have given us during these times, because without support, we would be nowhere. But I really want to say thank you to the men and women of the Clifton Health Department and Passaic Division of Health for what they have done. You know, we went through a lot of tough times, but we did it together. We leaned on each other, good times and bad, and I really, to me, they are the true heroes of, they have done above and beyond what they, you know, were required to do, a lot of these individuals. So I want to thank them and just tell them how much I appreciate them, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any comments from any officials from the City of Clifton?
I know there was a graduation at 6:30, so I don't know. You like me anyway, so whatever. I'm only kidding.
No, no, no. Well, we thank you for everything you've done, we know, we know.
I like you John, and I live there, so you know, I like you.
Thank you Commissioner James, I'm only kidding, they like me.
I know.
And Micah just add that Clifton was, if not the first, one of the first places we set up mobile testing, and John and his entire staff in the City of Clifton couldn't have been more helpful and offer us, you know, more resources and their talents, and it was really made the whole process so much better. You know, John, thank you so much for your kind words, but honestly, thank you for everything that you do, your passion that you bring to the job clearly shows, and I really respect it and keep up the good work.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I guess I should turn this over then to Commissioner Apter.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Lazara. It's my honor to recognize Dr. Paul Prasad, who is the Health Officer for the City of Patterson, as well as Prospect Park, North Halden, and Totala. Is he, Lou, do we have him online or no?
He is here, sir.
Okay, great. Well, let me just read the proclamation, let me just say that it's a fantastic honor to recognize our health officers, and people often ask what County Commissioners do, what the county does, and they often think of partisan politics, but amongst the many things we do, what was done during this pandemic and what's been done throughout the years that I've worked in the county, is that it's been a completely non-partisan process, and even though politics interjected itself in this pandemic in so many places, I didn't see a whiff of that from my experience during all that, and that's a testament to Dr. Gungill, as well as all the health officers who took the steps necessary to try to protect as many people as possible, so I'm grateful for the fact that we're doing this. So let me recognize Dr. Prasad, whereas Dr. Prasad has more than 35 years of national and international experience in the field of public health and clinical practice. He received his MBA in 1985 at the Superior Institute of Medical Sciences in Santiago de Cuba, and later in Cuba, and later obtained his Masters of Public Health in 1999 from Columbia University in New York, before graduating with his PhD in Public Health Epidemiology from Walden University in May of 2011. Dr. Prasad is currently the Program Manager for Disease Prevention and Control for the Patterson Division of Health. And whereas Dr. Prasad has proved his dedication and concern for the well-being of not only the citizens of Patterson, Prospect Park, Hawthorne, North Halden, Totala, but also the County of Passaic through his everlasting commitment and noble acts of service and heroism, specifically during the COVID-19 pandemic, when he and several others, several other healthcare professionals were tirelessly planning meetings with both the State and Passaic County Health officials to adopt strategies and how to cope and contain the disease. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has proven to be a trying time for all its challenged health officials and professionals around the world, seemingly because of the lack of knowledge about the disease, given its unprecedented nature, under his leadership, Patterson began offering COVID-19 testing in October 2020, and began administrative vaccinations towards the end of December 2020. And whereas Dr. Prasad is a most valued and respected associate and friend of many persons in Passaic County, which is evidenced by significant contributions he has made benefiting the citizenry of the County of Passaic, now therefore of the county of Passaic. Now therefore be proclaimed at the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic, that it publicly recognizes Dr. Prasad for his genuine interest and concern for the well-being of the citizens of the county of Passaic. Uh, and thank you for your work, uh, Dr. Prasad, both, uh, in Patterson, where I live, in Prospect Park, uh, Hawthorne, uh, North Haildon and Totala. Thank you.
Good. Thank you very much.
You want to say a few words, Dr. Prasad? It's, it's all, it's all yours. I'm sorry.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, Commissioner Acker. Um, I want to thank, first of all, Mr. De Nova and um, steam of commissioners, um, for organizing this, um, award ceremony. I really appreciate this. I'm sure all my colleagues also feel the same way. Um, you know, being a health officer, uh, for the third largest city during this pan, during this pandemic, third largest city, I would say, New Jersey, um, during this pandemic became a, a very formidable task, not only because of the pandemic, but because we were also tasked with keeping all our programs, all our clinics, everything that is needed for a inner city like Patterson functional during the time of this pandemic. So we never closed any programs. We kept everything open. But, you know, this, this, this is not, this is not a job of the health officer only. I, you know, we, we, at the Patterson Health Department, we put together, um, I would, what I would, what I would say the best functional team that any health department can ever hope for. I will forever be grateful for my entire team of Patterson, uh, Division of Health employees. Also, I think I'd be, you know, this, for me, this pandemic occurred in a, at a time when I'm most fortunate to have someone, uh, who's the CEO of our city that really got it and really understood, um, the public health nature and aspects of, of this, uh, disease. I, I called, I called our mayor, Andres Seag, the vaccination mayor, principally because of three, three reasons. He's always been present uh, throughout this pandemic and available. Um, he has made many valuable contribution, contributions, not only valuable, but timely contributions to the vaccination operations of our city and to the county at large. Um, he also provided the most meaningful, uh, support and leadership to me and my team um, when we needed it the most. So for this, I'll be eternally grateful to work for a mayor, Andres Seag, during these trying times. Um, so, you know, once more, I would like to thank my team dearly, the Health Department, all our staff. I'd like to thank my fellow, um, Passaic County Health Officers also for a job well done. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Prasad. And, uh, I know we have Mayor Sine here, uh, from the city of Patterson. Mayor, do you want to say a few words?
What do you think, Commissioner?
You're not having enough of each other the last few days.
I have to say no, because you said a few words. I'd like to say more than a few, if I may, please. Bruce, man, say a few more.
Sure, you can say what you want.
She remembered it's mayor.
Thank you. I see I only need like one. So first, I want to thank our partners in Passaic County. This is a total team effort. We've never had a pandemic occur in our lifetimes. There was no such thing as a pandemic playbook, and I think we did the best with what we were given as far as resources are concerned, and it showed our resilience and we were all tested and it makes for a better testimony. I want to commend also the Passaic County Commissioners for not seeing it robbery to honor a leader in public health, Dr. Paul Prasad, who is the consummate professional. And since the onset of this pandemic has given me guidance and has assembled quite a team. In fact, in November of two thousand nineteen, we announced that we were receiving such a small grant to build capacity within what we call our strike team in the event that there was a foodborne outbreak. That's what we had originally targeted, but little did we know, it wouldn't be something that would occur at the Brownstone, the Bethwood or McAlusso's, but it was COVID nineteen that we were preparing for with our strike team and then building out to create that contact tracing that team that was featured in New York Times. So, Dr. Paul, I appreciate not only your leadership, but your friendship as well. And I'm honored that you would be awarded by our friends at Passaic County. Thanks again, everyone. And that was one minute and thirty seconds.
That was good.
Let me, uh, let me hand it back to hand the program back to, uh, to Commissioner Bartlett, I believe.
If I may just share one thing, because I think there's, you know, something that you take from all of this and, you know, one of the calls with the states when, when we were, you know, begging for more vaccine, you know, Dr. Paul finally just, you know, said on the phone call, just get me the vaccines and I'll get them in the arms. Don't, just get me the vaccines. And I, and I, and I share that because I really think that that goes to, you know, what public health officials were really all about. Didn't care where the people were from or, or, or anything else. Just get us the vaccines and we'll get them in the arm. And I think, you know, Dr. Paul, it's a testament to your professionalism and, and, and all of your colleagues on, on this call, because I really think that's what it was about, right? Just getting the job done. Not about individuals, it was about the team effort. So, Dr. Paul, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. De Nova. Thank you very much for your leadership also.
Very well said, Anthony. One of the things that's really not lost on me as I look at these proclamations is that Dr. Prasad, Mr. Beagle, uh, work as health officers in multiple communities, as does our own Dr. Charlene Gongo. And that means you've got to respond to a lot of different people. You've got to be ready to understand a lot of different communities and how they work. And certainly that's true in some of the very diverse communities that we all represent. Uh, and the same is true of, uh, the health officer that I'm pleased to be recognizing and honoring today, and that's Mary Ann, Mary Ann Oropello of Wayne and Pompton Lakes. So without further ado, I will read that proclamation into the record. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic wishes at this time to recognize Mary Ann Oropello, the Health Officer for the Township of Wayne and the Borough of Pompton Lakes. And whereas Mary Ann Oropello graduated from Trenton State College, now known as the College of New Jersey, with a Bachelor of Science degree in biology and chemistry, before later obtaining her Master's Degree in Environmental Science from Montclair State University. She began her career in the healthcare field in nineteen eighty-five as a Registered Environmental Health Specialist and has held various roles, including recycling coordinator, executive director, and now health officer and director since two thousand four. And whereas Mary Ann Oropello has proven her dedication and concern for the well-being of not only the citizens of Wayne and Pompton Lakes, but also the county of Passaic through her everlasting commitment and noble acts of service and heroism, specifically during the COVID nineteen pandemic, when she and several other healthcare professionals worked tirelessly, planning, planning meetings with both the state and the Passaic County health officials to adopt strategies on how to cope with and contain the disease. And whereas the COVID nineteen pandemic has proven to be a trying time for all, as it challenged health officials and professionals around the world, seemingly because of a lack of knowledge about the disease, given its unprecedented nature. Under the leadership of Mary Ann Oropello, as part of the Emergency Management Council, the Township of Wayne was among the first in the county of Passaic to require, uh, to, excuse me, to acquire personal protective equipment or PPE, given the nationwide shortage in the beginning of the pandemic. And that this helped many healthcare professionals continue to serve the residents through the pandemic and remain safe. She was also responsible for setting up and implementing the township's COVID testing program, which involved contact tracing as part of the statewide mitigation plan. And I just want to mention, living in Wayne, uh, the particular challenge that we've heard from Dr. Gungill throughout the process of uh, the, the number of communities within Wayne, particularly senior citizens communities that were a particular challenge, uh, both to reach and of course, to protect because of the vulnerability of the elderly. Uh, and I know that was such a big part of what Mary Ann was working on. Uh, and whereas Mary Ann Oropello is regarded by her peers and colleagues as tough-minded and compassionate, two qualities that have made her distinguishable among many, many leaders in the healthcare field. An honor that has led her to be issued various awards and recognition, including being named Township of Wayne's Person of the Year for twenty twenty. And whereas Mary Ann Oropello is the most valued and respected associate and friend of many persons in Passaic County, which is evidenced by the significant contributions she has made benefiting, benefiting the citizenry of the county of Passaic. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly recognizes Mary Ann Oropello for her genuine interest and concern for the well-being of the citizens of the county of Passaic. And be it further proclaimed, this board extends its sincere best wishes to her for her continued success in her role as, as health officer for the Township of Wayne and the Borough of Pompton Lakes, duly signed by all of us. And Mary Ann, I want to let you know, um, the, your service and esteem is so remarkable that according to our RSVP list, we're joined right now by most, both make, like, Michael Sarah, Mayor of Pompton Lakes, and Christopher Vergano, Mayor of Wayne, as well as Kelly Hallowitz from the Pompton Lakes Board of Health, Valerie Quigley from the Valley Hospital and of Pompton Lakes, and Councilwoman Maria Kent of Pompton Lakes. So with that, I, we do want to hear from you, but I'd like to give each mayor an opportunity to say what they may, uh, they want to about your service. And then Mary Ann, I know we want to hear from you. Why don't we, so I'm not playing favorites with Township of Wayne, let's start with, uh, Mayor Sarah.
Mayor, you're muted.
I haven't brought, can you hear, you guys hear me?
Good.
Makes a lot of sense starting with Pompton Lakes instead of Wayne, so thank you. Um, well, first of all, I want to thank the commissioners and, and Anthony De Nova. You know, I think we were, we were the best county running when it came to COVID. We really communicated well and we got a lot of information out that helped everybody. You know, coming from a small town here in Pompton Lakes, the information was vital to what we did. And that's where Mary Ann came in. Mary Ann was, was vital on, on our fight to COVID. I know I could pick up the phone and call her at any time of the day or night to ask a question, and there were a lot of questions. You know, setting up a, a health and vaccine site in Wayne was, was tremendous for Wayne and for Pompton Lakes. A lot of our residents were able to get over there. It was close. It was reliable and it was easy. And our numbers were higher, I believe, because, you know, we had some good results with vaccinations. So, so I thank her for that. The, the most important part of it is Mary Ann understood the community and reached out to the groups on her own. She would reach out to seniors. She would reach out to churches. She would reach out anywhere she could to make sure a vaccination could get out there. So, you know, with, with that big push and the whole health department really was exemplary to us. You know, we had somebody that we worked with, with our schools and they had a lot of questions, um, with our sports programs or recreation. Uh, from, from simple, simple things and simple questions, they were always there to answer the question. Uh, and I appreciate that. I, I, I respect that. I respect all, all the healthcare workers on the screen. You guys did a tremendous job in this last year and a half. And, and without you, I don't know where we would. So everyone here from Pompton Lakes, thank you for your help, Mary Ann. You know, we, I know I can still call you tomorrow if I have a concern or a question, and I thank you for that. So, so thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much, uh, Mayor Sarah and, uh, my mayor, who I didn't, uh, favor with the first, uh, first, but, uh, Christopher P. Vergano of Wayne. Chris.
Good evening. Thank you, uh, everyone. Um, just a few comments I have to make. I don't, I'm not even sure if you realize how great the plan was from Passaic County to handle our COVID nineteen pandemic. I, I need to say that as strong as possible. Starting with Tony De Nova and Charlene Gongo, I've never seen a group of people work together so intensely to save lives. And unfortunately in Wayne, we lost two hundred and ten people to COVID, and many of that was due to the twelve nursing home and long-term care facilities that we have. But I say from the bottom of my heart, congratulations to all of you, because what a job well done. Um, and Mary Ann, who I've learned is the potty mouth of our emergency management group, but so hopefully she won't say those words today. But she tolerated me for a year and a half, uh, asking questions every single day. Um, I did drive them a little crazy. I did ninety-nine videos for our community and people were actually watching them to get informed about where we were, because let's face it, in the beginning, it was very frightening. And the words of wisdom came down from Dr. Gungill, that everything's going to be all right. We're all going to work together. We're going to do a massive amount of testing. And then further down the road, we're going to do vaccinations and we set up our vaccination site, and the county could have not have been any more helpful in doing that. Uh, whether it were days we were running out of, out of vaccines and we were borrowing from the county and coming back and forth. And Tony, I, I, I thank you for tolerating me during all the craziness. Uh, but we all kept our cool because we all had one thing in mind, and those were our residents. And, uh, again, I just need to say how impressed I was with the county really stepped forward. And I've been saying this over and over, uh, over the year and a half now, but thank you to all of you, because you made a difference in people's lives. And now we're trying to vaccinate as many people as possible. I think we're being successful. But it's all due to coming from the top, working down and working with all the different communities. And I'm sure that, that wasn't easy. So tonight, uh, Mary Ann, we know you love, we love, we do love you, Mary Ann, despite what I say, but we had many, many meetings with our emergency management group, and we tried to use the police department to keep people calm. Uh, and also the videos, but, but the leadership from the top on this effort was amazing. So Mary Ann, congratulations. I'm amazed she's, she's here today because she's the one behind the scenes. No, that she doesn't want to talk to anybody. Probably because she's so busy and her staff sending me emails at four o'clock in the morning with updates on where we are and how many positive cases and what's going on. Just very impressive. I know I'm talking a lot. You're going to start calling me Andre soon, so I will stop now, but thank you to all of you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Uh, and I know that I speak for all of my colleagues when I say we wish you well, uh, and, and good health and recovery. And thank you very much for being here with us to, uh, to honor Mary Ann. Uh, and without further ado, thanks again to Councilwoman Kent, uh, and Valerie Quigley for joining us, but I want to give, uh, the, the woman of the moment, if not the hour, uh, Mary Ann Oropello, the opportunity to say a few words.
Hopefully, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, because I'm on the phone. I, I couldn't, I was having technical difficulties, which is usual. Um, I will keep it real brief. Uh, you guys have said, you know, so much. I, I really, I want to thank everybody. I want to thank Mr. De Nova, the county commissioners, both my mayors. Uh, none of this could have been done without the support from everybody. Um, it was truly a group effort. Um, from, you know, working with Charlene and the other, uh, the other county health officers, we really did this together. There was no way that this could have been done without support, supporting each other and support from our administrations and other departments like police. Um, our CERT team, which was almost non-existent prior to, um, you know, the vaccination clinics, because they hadn't been used in a few years. Uh, they've stepped up. They, they were, we have the same people at every clinic working and it's truly amazing, the volunteerism that we have in these townships. Because we have volunteers both from Pompton and Wayne doing these clinics. So it's, it's truly been wonderful and quite an experience. Um, I'm hoping it's going to be over soon. But I, I, again, I just want to thank everybody for this honor. I, I truly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann. I think, I think we all, uh, wish it to be over soon. Uh, and thank you for everything you've, uh, you've done for Wayne. I'm going to, uh, pass the, uh, microphone back to, uh, Commissioner Lozera.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have the honor of introducing, uh, Thomas Cantissano from Bloomingdale, and he also is a health officer for Paquannic. Another one of our hometown heroes that really got us through this, uh, awful, the awful time. But I'd like to read his, uh, proclamation into the record too. Whereas the Board of Commissioners of the County of Passaic wishes at this time to recognize Thomas Cantissano, the Health Officer for the Borough of Bloomingdale. And whereas Thomas Cantissano is also the Health Officer for, Officer for the Paquannic Township Health Department, in which the Borough of Bloomingdale receives shared health services in conjunction through a contractual agreement. An accomplished and qualified professional, he has over twenty-three years of extensive experience in the healthcare field and is a licensed New Jersey Chief Registered Environmental Specialist. He holds a Bachelor of Arts degree in Business Administration from William Patterson University and obtained his Master of Arts degree in Environmental Management from Montclair State University. Whereas Thomas Cantissano's duties as a health officer include managing and monitoring public health activities, responses and projects, and preparing and responding to public health emergencies, including bioterrorism and pandemics. In addition to his current title of Health Officer, he also serves as the Acting Director of Health and has previously held the position of Deputy OEM, Office of Emergency Management Coordinator and CERT, Community Emergency Response Team Coordinator for the Township of Wayne for fifteen For the Township of Wayne for 15 years where he trained hundreds of CERT volunteers for participating in planning. Efforts for the H1N1 pandemic influenza Ebola and Zika virus response protocols. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has proven to be a trying time for all as a challenged health officials and professionals around the world. Seemingly because of the lack of knowledge about the disease given its unprecedented nature. Thomas Cantissano has proven his dedication and concern for the well being of not only the citizens of Bloomingdale. But also the county of Passaic. Through through his everlasting commitment and noble acts of service and heroism. Specifically during the pandemic when he and several other healthcare professionals worked tirelessly. Planning meetings for both the state and the Passaic County Health officials to adopt strategies on how to cope and contain the disease. Whereas Thomas Cantissano is a most valued and respected associate and friend of many persons in Passaic County. Which is evidenced by the significant contributions. He has made benefiting the citizenry of the county of Passaic. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic that it publicly recognizes. Thomas Cantissano for his genuine interest and concern for the well being of the citizens of the county of Passaic. And be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to him. For continued success in his role as health officer for the borough of Bloomingdale. I don't know, Tom, are you on?
Does anyone? Yes, yes, I'm here.
Okay, I'm, oh, there you are, hi.
Hello.
I'd like to invite you to say a few words.
Yes, it's my, I'd like to thank Mr. Danova, the county commissioners. I I think this is really a wonderful thing to recognize the health officials, the health officers. This is a vocation for us, this is, we've done really. This is what our duty is and this is what our vocation is and and I think we've done what the public expects of us here. And extraordinary circumstances require extraordinary action. And my colleagues and I really have worked together in a collaboration. To to serve the public through these really difficult times. But as many of my colleagues have said, it could not be done without the support of the county commissioners. Charlene Gungill has been really an incredible supportive. Resource for all of the towns and I greatly appreciate the interaction and friendship that I've had with her for many years. I also want to thank the the mayor and council, Bloomingdale, the Board of Health. Our relationship was was really incredible, we worked together really almost on a daily basis to get through. The many different crises that emerged. I'd like to also just acknowledge, I developed a friendship with Mayor John Dunleavy during this time. We were really forged a close relationship, we worked daily, really multiple times a day. Day and night to try to get through some of these really difficult times. And he passed in September and he was a friend, he was 56 years old. But I really feel like I lost a good friend, as did the entire community, he was Bloomingdale, he served that town at a level that is. So admirable and I was just honored to have those months to to get to know him and serve the public alongside Mayor Dunleavy. He'll truly be missed and. Was a great honor, I also want to really acknowledge the Paquonic Health Department staff. As you had stated, we are the Paquonic Health Department through shared services, we are the Borough of Bloomingdale Health Department. We also have three other towns in Morris County and my relatively small staff. Had to deal with everything times five and they did so with. You know, with a lot of strength. And I'm just in awe of how this staff rose to the occasion. I started in my position on March 9th of 2020, which was the day the emergency was declared. And I didn't know the staff very well and it was just an amazing thing to to see everybody coalesce around each other. Through both professional and personal crises that had come up with most of the staff and we just. You know, we persevered through it and we did our duty and 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 this acknowledgement is for them as much as anybody else and I just want to make that point. But but thank you all, this is a collaboration and as Marion Oropello said, we could not do this without each other. So thank you very much.
Well, we thank you and we have Councilwoman Dawn.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Tom, you know, Tom and I spoke many times throughout the pandemic and he knows, you know, we had one specific conversation. When I found out that Bloomingdale was going to be getting a new health officer in the middle of pandemic. I must say, I was a little nervous. But Tom, he jumped right in and he blew it out of the park for us. Tom and his team worked during incredible stressful time. But he took the time to answer every call, every email, every text message, he attended every meeting. He stayed up to date on the incredible amounts of information that was changing daily. All the while, he had an upbeat can do attitude. Tom, you have become the foundation of that health department. Your leadership, your dedication combined with your staff's teamwork and energy. Has made life a little easier for all of us during this really unprecedented time. Thank you for everything that you have done for the borough of Bloomingdale. We're lucky to have you as our health officer and. You know, it's really been an honor to get to know you and. I'm sure glad that you were on board with us during this tough time, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hudson. Wow, we have, we've done some great recognition today.
Sandy, I know the administrator is also on the line, I don't know if he wants to say anything as well, former former congressman now administrator. Michael.
Actually, I'm, I also have the mayor here with me as well, John Damato.
Great.
I'm going to say thank Tom because he's just been an asset, obviously me doing this role and him doing his role, I've been leaning on him a lot the last five, six months here. And helping me out personally a lot with the health issues here in Bloomingdale, but I'll hand it over to Mayor Damato.
Tony, how are you?
Good, Mayor.
Tom, I just want to say on behalf of the borough, thank you for all you did for us. You probably don't remember, I met you. In council chambers, probably a week or so or two weeks after you started and we had that department head meeting with Mayor Dunleavy. And when he first got thrown into the fire. And I have to reiterate what Councilwoman Hudson said, you jumped in, took control, availability was. You were available all the time for our borough and I can tell you from all the department heads here, from Chief Varell. To our OEM coordinators, Councilwoman Hudson, anybody that reached out to you had answers and you were informative all throughout. Whether it be testing sites, vaccinations, vaccines, times and getting people. Set up for vaccines, but you kept us informed and kept the borough going in a good, in a good direction and a positive attitude so we can come out of this. With everybody being safe, so again, thank you from the borough and thank you from the mayor and council, we really appreciate what you do for us.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you all, I'm going to pass this back over to Commissioner Director Laporte. Commissioner Laporte.
Thank you, Cindy. First of all, I want to acknowledge personally. All the department heads and their staffs, the mayors of all the towns who worked hand in hand. With their health departments and did everything that they could do to help them during this incredible trying time. But I have the the privilege and it is a privilege to acknowledge someone who. Was just an amazing, an amazing person during this whole thing. You know, we, in the beginning of this thing, we all were a little nervous. And it got to a point when the hospitalizations started climbing and the deaths were climbing. And we were all kind of looking around very nervously and asking many questions, there was one person who stood out. And that person is Dr. Gungill. Charlene, whenever the pressure would start to really get poured on and when people were coming to you for answers. You responded in a very calm and resolute manner and you got us through this. So the one thing I'm going to remember about this pandemic is people like you. The the all the other health officials throughout the county. Your your co-conspirator Anthony Danova. Who you guys were the best one-two punch that anybody can ask for when it came to trying to knock out this this virus. So again, it gives me great. Pleasure and and it gives me an incredible amount of honor to acknowledge you, Dr. Charlene Gungill. Whereas the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic is aware. That department heads are an integral part of the day to day operations of the county of Passaic. And as such wishes at this time. To recognize Dr. Charlene W. Gungill. The respective health officers for the borough of Woodland Park, Heldon, Wanacue and the township of West Milford. As well as the Director of the Passaic County Health Department, which is comprised of four divisions. Emergency Preparedness and Bioterrorism, Environmental, Mosquito Control and Natural Resource and Recycling. Dr. Gungill has been employed by the Passaic County Department of Health since 2009. And has served as the health officer for the past seven years. Dr. Gungill has proven her dedication and concern for the county of Passaic. Through her everlasting commitment and noble acts of service and heroism. Specifically during the pandemic when she and several other healthcare professionals worked tirelessly. Planned meetings to adopt strategies and how to cope and contain the disease. Dr. Gungill's efforts have allowed the public health threat to substantially decrease throughout Passaic County. Through the setup and operation of the county's first COVID-19 drive-through testing site at William Patterson University. Before transitioning to the walkthrough testing pop-up sites throughout the county. And setting up the county's first at-home testing services. Dr. Gungill's collaboration with the state led the county to benefit from a phased approach to COVID-19 vaccination. Which ensured that limited that, excuse me, limited vaccines were distributed throughout the county in a fair and equitable manner. With setting up vaccine mega sites in Woodland Park, West Milford, Wanacue. And pop-up sites throughout the county resulting in the primary vaccination goal of being achieved with 267,248 residents being vaccinated so far. Dr. Charlene Gungill provided weekly updates to the county administration and the individual municipalities with COVID-19 data. Put together by her staff. Dr. Gungill is the most valued, most valued and respected associate and friend of many persons in Passaic County. Which is evidenced by the significant contributions she has made benefiting the citizens, citizenry of Passaic County. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic. That it publicly recognizes Dr. Charlene W. Gungill. For her genuine interest and concern for the well being of the citizenry of the county of Passaic. Be it further proclaimed that this board extends its sincere best wishes to her for her continued success. In her role as the health officer for the boroughs of Woodland Park, Heldon, Wanacue and the Township of West Milford. And the Director of the Passaic County Health Department, thank you, Dr. Gungill. Okay, Doctor, are you on?
Yes, I'm I'm on, I'm just speechless because you guys have done it again, you had me believe that I was working, you know. What?
You're speechless, when are you?
Because because I was preparing for my colleagues and. Because you said you were going to recognize the municipal health officers, so thank you, I. It's my pleasure to serve, I say it all the time, this is what I signed up for. And even though it was unprecedented, I think the real unprecedented piece was the collaboration with all of the partners in Passaic County. And I believe it was John that said that we were the top county in terms of of working together, in terms of responding together. It was all, it was all. A joint effort to serve our residents and I I am so pleased that that I have John and Mary Ann and Tom. And Paul and also Kathy, although she's not on tonight, to serve with me as health officers. And our teams in our health departments and I'm going to start with with my team. My 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 Sandy, my my supervisor of nursing, she's small in stature, but she is a giant in work. She gets it done, she gets it done with a smile and a laugh on her face. They've, my team and all of our teams throughout the county, county have put in, have been tireless. They've been working day and night for, you know, since before COVID started in our preparation for COVID and. It is they, the nurses, the the health educators, the the clerical staff, it is the employees of the health department. That really got this job done. And I can't thank them enough, all of them, every single one who answered the phone, who calm people's nerves. But we couldn't do that without the support of our respective boards, for me, the Board of of County Commissioners and. My star, Mr. Danova and for all of our health officers, I know that their mayors and council. Allowed them to do their jobs and that's a real key part, recognizing that, yes, we've studied for this. Yes, we've planned, we've executed, we've practiced and this is the moment that where it really was going to matter and all of you. Allowed us to do what we were trained to do and I'm really grateful for that. So thanks again, you got me, Mr. Danova, I honestly did not know you were doing this to me. And so it is my pleasure, it is my pleasure to serve the people and you know, I like my numbers, we hit our numbers 20 days. Earlier than our goal, so kudos for Passaic County. Right now, we have six municipalities that are over 70%. And we have like five that are almost 70% and we're going to make it, all of us are going to make it. In Passaic County, we're going to do it one person at a time. Evening, night, whatever it takes to get people vaccinated and protect lives, so. Again, my pleasure to serve and thank you so much, every single one of you.
Thank you, Doctor, I believe that Mayor Dale might be on the line. Is she here?
I believe Mayor Dale has not been able to join us.
Okay. All right, with that. Dr. Gungill, I have your proclamation, obviously, we couldn't give it to you yet. Otherwise, that would have blown the surprise, but here it is and we will get it to you ASAP. Okay.
Director, if I could, I can't let the moment go by without just saying a couple of words about Charlene. We spent a lot of time together and again, this is by no means, and and I think Charlene and I both appreciate the kind words that people said, but. You know, everyone on this call, all the commissioners, you know, Matt and Kelly and Lou and. Barry Feinberg, I mean, there were so many people involved in this, but I I had a unique opportunity to watch Charlene interact. With not only the Passaic County Health Officers, but all of the health officers throughout the state and. Everyone respected her and and and, you know. Asked her her opinion, she really is a leader, you know, not only here in the county, but but throughout the state and. You know, I I'm always going to regret saying these nice things because she remembers them all the time and throws them back in my face when I say something not nice, but. I I don't know what we would have done without her at the helm here in Passaic County, I truly don't, and I don't want to sound dramatic, but I truly don't know what we would have did because she really. Was the calming force, she has that ability to unlike me who gets crazy when things aren't going right, she, you know, she was the calming force in the room many a time. And you know, we were many late nights here together. And, you know, we were many late nights here together. I, I can't say enough about her professionalism and, and her personality and her ability to lead during this crisis. It truly was amazing to watch. And as I said, I don't think we would have nearly been successful as we were without Charlene leading us through that, through this crisis. And, and while it's not over and we still have work to do, I'm convinced that we wouldn't have saved as many lives if not for her and, and all of the colleagues who, who were honored here this evening. As I said earlier, I, I think it's a whole new respect for professionals in, in public health. So thank you, Charlene, and congratulations to all of the health officers who were honored here tonight. A well-deserved honor. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Danova, do you want to continue with the?
We have, yes, thank you. Thank you, Director. So we have two public hearings on grant applications to green acres. The first, well, rather than me saying it, because it's, I think it's going to be part of the, the notice. I'll, I'll turn it over to Lou, I guess, to read the.
I have it.
Public Meetings Act. Do you have it? I'll turn it over to you, Director.
Okay. The public hearing for the grant application to be submitted by the County of Passaic to New Jersey Department Environmental Protections Green Acres Program by the County of Passaic. The public hearing is regarding an application to the state for a grant in the amount of $4 million to fund acquisition of the real property located at 335 Union Avenue in the borough of Bloomingdale, the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, Block 86, Lot 2, for incorporation of the same into the Passaic County Park System. The following public hearing was advertised in the Record and the Herald News on January 2, 2021, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing. That was the announcement. May I have a roll call, please?
Thank, thank you, Director. Just for clarification, I apologize for the typo there. It's Ju-, June, June 2, 2021 was publication date for public hearing.
22.
And then also for the roll call, County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes, sir.
Bartlet.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Zara.
Here.
James.
Here.
Lapore.
Here. I have a motion to open the public hearing on the grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program.
Move.
Moved by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Bartlet. Roll call. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yes, roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. If anyone present or online desires to be heard on this application, Lou, I'll turn it over to you. I'll remind everyone you have three minutes.
Okay, Director. We do not have any messages at public@passaiccountynj.org in reference to this public hearing. And I do not believe we have anybody on the WebEx waiting to speak. If, Micah, if you could just check and ask for people that raise their hands.
We presently have no hands raised, nothing in chat, and nothing in Q and A.
To the closed public portion. Second by Commissioner Duffy to close, second by Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Lou, do I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes, please.
Okay. I have a motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Bartlet. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Our second public hearing tonight is for the grant application to be submitted by the County of Passaic to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections Green Acres Program by the County of Passaic. The public hearing is regarding the application to the state for a grant in the amount of $2,225,000 to fund the Lambert Castle Landscape Restoration Project. The following public hearing was advertised in the Record and the Herald News on June 22, 2021, specifying the time, date, and location of the public hearing. May I have a roll call, please?
County Commissioners, Octor.
Here.
Bartlet.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy.
Here.
Lazara.
Here.
Deputy Director James.
Here.
Director Lapore.
Here. I need a motion to open the public hearing on the grant application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Green Acres Program.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. If anyone wishes to start to be heard on this application, I want to remind everyone you have three minutes. Lou, I'll turn it to you.
All right, Director. We do not have any messages regarding this public hearing at public@passaiccountynj.org. Once again, Micah, do you have anybody waiting to speak on WebEx?
I have no hands raised. There are no messages in chat, and there's nothing in Q and A.
Motion to close public hearing.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
By Deputy Director James. Roll call.
County Commissioners, Octor.
Yes.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Octor. Roll call.
We'll switch it up. All in favor of this motion?
Aye.
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 Anyone, anyone opposed? All right. Motion passes.
Mr. Danova, I believe, I'll throw it back to you if you have anything.
That concludes my portion of the agenda, Director. Thank you.
Okay. On the County Commissioner reports, Deputy Director James, do you have anything?
Just want to add the thanks to, you know, the last pandemic the world saw was in 1918 and 1919. Given our response under Tony and Charlene's tutelage here, I can't imagine what the world went through when they didn't have a team like we had to handle that pandemic. And worldwide, millions of people died. And I can't imagine how scary it was when they had no treatments and no staff that really knew how to, how to battle it. Now, Charlene Gungill has said many times, this is what she studied for. It's a once-in-a-lifetime, hopefully, once-in-a-lifetime event. But boy, was she prepared. And everybody that got honored tonight was super prepared. And, you know, as a county, and I give our administrator credit for this, as a county, and, and all the, all the health officers, as a county, we were recognized nationally in some areas for what, how we were handling this pandemic and how we were, you know, attacking the testing and finally the vaccines. And I have to say, we, I really believe that we were the premier county in the country that, that handled this pandemic. May it be over shortly. May people get vaccinated and finish this pandemic, and may we never have another one in our lifetime. But if we do, I know that we're prepared to handle whatever comes our way because of the, the people that were honored tonight. So thank you all. That's it, Pat.
I'm sorry. I had you mute yourself. I'm sorry.
Okay, can you hear me? Commissioner Best?
I can hear you now, Pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Just very briefly, I wanted to thank everyone who helped to make our first-ever Juneteenth celebration a huge success. At Garrett Mountain, we had it this past Saturday. It was an amazing event. We had hundreds of people there. It was a great band. The, the rain got to us a little bit in the middle of one of our performances, but we made lemonade out of lemons and we had a wonderful time. So I just wanted to thank Kelly and her amazing team. I also wanted to take, thank the, the Park Rangers for their support and everyone else who helped out. So thank you all, and let's get on with this meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Octor?
Well, thank you so much, Director. I just want to second what Freihold or Best said, even though I wasn't able to make our county ceremony because I was traveling. But it is fantastic that the federal government has finally recognized Juneteenth as a federal holiday. The state of New Jersey did it, I believe, two years ago, leading the way. And I know it is a county that there were many recognitions. And, and, and I know it's a celebration, but it's also a recognition of a terribly painful time in our history and, and something which we still haven't corrected in terms of the consequences of. I also just wanted to acknowledge Pride Month. I don't know if anyone had done it at our last meeting, but this is the last meeting during Pride Month, and I wanted to recognize that and acknowledge a fact that the first gay athlete in professional football, Carl Nassett, came out as a, somebody who's a Raiders fan since childhood. That gives me a little bit of pride to recognize that that's for a team I root for. But it's, it's long overdue. And I know that we have athletes on our county teams and our local teams, and there's attack on transgender athletes. These are young people who are under attack. And, you know, we hope that they can all do what they're doing with pride or with privacy, whatever they prefer. But that, you know, we support all our LGBTQIA community here in Passaic County, and I'm proud of the way we've always handled those affairs here in Passaic County. So sorry, acknowledge that. Thank you, Director.
Okay. Commissioner Bartlet?
Thank you, Director. First, superb job, TJ. But more important, your wife and the other organizers on Juneteenth this past weekend. Really, really excellent. And Assad, I second the things you were saying about pride. I had the pleasure of speaking to the pride gathering in Wayne this past weekend. And, you know, as, as the football player said in his video, this shouldn't be remarkable, but as long as it is, one of our roles in public life is to acknowledge it. So I just wanted to provide all of you with a little bit of an update on our eviction prevention initiative. As you all know, I've been meeting every week with the team of really consummate professionals that are making that happen and rolling it out. And I'm happy to say that we've had more than 1,000 landlords and tenants apply. We now have almost 300 of them that are through the process. And by sometime this week, we'll be in a position to distribute the first $1.5 million of rent relief to those 200-plus tenants, well, distributed to the landlords, but protect those tenants and their families from eviction, looking backwards as far as last March and looking forwards as well. Because part of what the landlords accept by receiving this funding is that they accept forward-looking three months of residential stability for the tenants. And the tenants in turn get to benefit from all kinds of wraparound services. But things are moving. The first $1.5 million or so should be out the door this week or at the latest next. And by early next week, we will roll out a website where the landlord starts the process. As any of you know who visited impactpassaic.com, the, it's designed for the tenant to take the first step. We've designed a separate, well, the website will be in the same location, but a way for the landlord to start the process. Because obviously, it's the landlords that are looking to get paid. But progress is moving and, more important, you know, seven figures of funding are moving out into our communities in the days ahead.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. We have no communications. So I'll take a motion.
Director, Director, can I, can I, you know, I just want to make one more statement that I forgot to make. So I want to go back to 2006, before there was gay marriage, but the state of New Jersey, I believe it was 2006 anyway, allowed for domestic partnerships, but it took an affirmative vote by a board of, at that time, freiholders, if we were going to extend the benefits of, you know, domestic partnership to our employees. And the only people who were here at the time, who are still here, is Pat, our director, and Terry Duffy. And we passed that unanimously, allowing Passaic County employees to register as domestic partners, if at least they were registered in their towns. We got requests, believe it or not, we got requests to do this from members of our Sheriff's Department. And we unanimously passed it, which influenced Ocean County to pass the same type of resolution. And there, a sheriff's officer whose partner was suffering cancer and had no medical coverage of treatment, they passed it because we passed it. It allowed that person to, that couple to register as domestic partners. And that person then had access to healthcare and cancer treatment. So I will always be grateful, Pat and Terry, to you two who were on the board with me at the time for supporting that and getting it through. And it was the first county, I believe, in the state to, to recognize domestic partnerships. So thank you. You know, I know that now there's, you know, marriage for same-sex couples. This was before that time, but you really did a, a great service to the people that needed it at the time, and I really do appreciate it.
It's, you were a part of it. Yes, you were. Okay. This time, I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
I will.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Director James.
Second by Commissioner Duffy.
I was first.
Roll call.
Yeah, comment. All right.
You forgot her name?
Yes. No, I did not. My, I was trying to get the video up, but it's not coming up. So County Commissioners, Octor.
There you are.
Yes, thank you, Lou.
Bartlet.
Yes.
Best.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Anyone wishing to be heard during this public portion, state your name, your address, and you have three minutes. And Lou, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank, thank you, Director. I have two emails that came in at public@passaiccountynj.org. The first one came in from a Mr. Roger Agnoli back on Thursday, June 10. Dear Pat, dear Terry, Pat, and the rest of the commissioners, this project must be stopped. This is a reference to the, please stop the TGP gas compressor in West Milford. The project must be stopped. Two reservoirs are in jeopardy. Over 3 million homes get their water from these reservoirs. When this project fails, how do we plan to get clean water for all these voters? I want you to know that, that if this project gets passed, I know seven commissioners and a governor that will be looking for new jobs. The wetlands and recreation areas, streams, rivers, recreational lands in West Milford and throughout northern New Jersey. The TGP is pushing gas to Westchester, New York, not, so TGB has the gas it doesn't have for a market, doesn't have a market for. Passaic County residents and residents across New Jersey understand the major risks of this project for our health, climate, and environment, and the commissioners must stand up for their constituents and the projected islands region and formally oppose this project. Note C, Henley groundwater contamination from the CBS 2020 Thursday special. the CBS twenty twenty Thursday special, eight P M. From nineteen fifty-two to nineteen sixty-six, Pacific Gas and Electric Company dumped about three hundred and seventy billion gallons of, uh, chromium tainted wastewater into unlined wastewater spreading ponds around the town of Hinckley, California, located in the Mojave Desert. P, P G E N E used chromium six, a hexavalent chromium, a cheap and efficient, rust supervisor, uh, suppressor in its compressor stations for natural gas transmission pipelines. Chromium comp- compounds are, uh, genotoxic carcinogens. In nineteen ninety-three, legal clerk Erin Brockovich began her investigation to the health impacts of the contamination. A gas at a class action lawsuit about the contamination settled in nineteen ninety-six for three hundred and thirty, uh, million dollars. In two thousand eight, PG and E settled, uh, last of the cases involved in the Hinckley claims. Since then, the town's population has dwindled to the point that in two thousand six, the New York Times described Hinckley as having slowly become a is estimated that it will take at least another fifty to sixty years to clean up the chemical mess while the cleanup proceeds and the plume continues to spread. Please don't let this happen again. Roger Agnoli, um, West Milford, New Jersey. The next, uh, email that came in at public@passaiccountynj.org is from Margaret Wood. On, uh, Dear Honorable, uh, Passaic County Commissioners, I am Margaret Wood, um, of Germantown Road, West Milford, New Jersey. I oppose the two compressor expansions at TGP in West Milford and Wantage. At our last meeting, my time, uh, ended before my statement was finished being read. One, I provided proof that the original Tennessee gas transmission pipeline was built in nineteen nine, nineteen fifty-five and is sixty-five years old. A second pipeline was added to it, uh, ten years ago. I made quick hands, uh, sketch illustrating Pennsylvania on the left and New Jersey on the right and the Delaware running between them. The pipeline is drawn in purple across, crossing the river. Please, uh, briefly show, um, to, for the record, you have all received, uh, copies of these slides, uh, that she wants us, uh, to see. And, uh, you all have received an email from Margaret Wood, and I have forwarded on to you also. Two, I provided the documentation stating that loops were added in the two thousand eleven and two thousand twelve as part of the three hundred line upgrade project. These loops run side by side, uh, with existing pipelines. The loops are connected to sixty-five-year-old pipeline in the beginning and in the end of the loop. The, the share, the same fracked gas and the same high pressure. In, in two thousand thirteen, TGB, uh, started the Northeast Upgrade Project, finishing the second pipeline by adding more loops to fill in the remaining gaps. And their figure three that she sent, uh, TGP also modified four existing compressor spaces to the service of both pipelines. Now TGB wants to increase the pressure of these pipelines by increasing the number of compressor stations. I want you to consider how corroded a sixty-five-year-old pipeline is. And fifteen, it is fifteen years past its engineered lifespan, lifespan. It is not designed to last this long. When originally built, it transported clean gas that exist, uh, existed in huge pockets. Is, it was not toxic back then. Today, TGB transports dirty fracked gas that is crushed out of the shale by injecting the shale with high-pressure fluids that are extremely toxic. The gas, the gas now contains volatile organic compounds that disrupt the, um, ek- ekarine system, creating damage throughout the body. VOCs do this extremely small amount parts per trillion. These VOCs floating on the methane gas and now leaking into the air, reservoirs, and soil that grows on our food. This sixty-five-year-old pipeline needs to be shut down, uh, for being a health hazard. TGB may try to replace it with a newer, uh, bigger pipelines. This must not be allowed. Even a new pipeline still has, still have compressor stations blow downs and leaks as it, as it, uh, at its joints. It is still released toxic VOCs in the air, water, and soil. We, we all can agree that a sixty-five-year-old pipeline needs to be shut down. What I, I want you to realize is that when a sixty-five-year-old pipeline is shut down, there will be no longer, there will no longer be, maybe a need for two extra compressor stations, a single pipeline.
Well, we went way beyond our time limit. Rest assured, the entire co- uh, email will be included in the record. Anyone else?
Micah, do you have, uh, people waiting in WebEx to speak?
I presently have, uh, no hands raised. I also have no, nothing in the Q and A and nothing in the chat.
Can we just give the, uh, people one chance to raise their hands, because I do believe there is no, and still, Mike, and no one raised their hands?
That is correct. Still nothing going.
All right, I'll take a motion to close public hearing.
Got motion.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry, people are muting when I, uh, you know, please don't mute me unless there's some interference, uh, Micah, right? I'm sorry, Pat, good, sorry.
That's right. I have a motion by Commissioner Duffy, second by Commissioner Okter. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes. Going on to the consent agenda, I'm going to pull, um, L twenty-seven, I'm sorry, yeah, L twenty-seven to be voted on separately. Kind of councils, we have, we have late starters.
Yes, Director, through you, there's one ame- excuse me. Excuse me. Uh, one amendment and five late starters. We need to amend, uh, L seven to include the, um, fully executed business entity disclosure certification by Dominion Voting Systems, Inc. Um, L forty-six, a resolution expanding the pool of outside legal patient advocates for the county adjusters office in calendar year two thousand twenty-one, authorizing a ward of contract to Jarden, Meisner, and Suster PC for legal services in calendar year two thousand twenty-one pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven, dash, five, at SEC. L forty-seven, a resolution authorizing award of contract to CMS Construction, Inc., for the site remediation that, at the Passaic County DPW facility in the borough of Popton Lakes, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, eleven, dash, one, at SEC. L forty-eight, a resolution authorizing a shared service agreement by, by and between the county of Passaic and the township of Wayne to incorporate the relocation of the water main with the replacement of the Rattler Road culvert number sixteen, dash, three, six, seven, pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon, sixty-five, dash, one, at SEC. L forty-nine, a resolution authorizing a grant application to the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Urban Parks Initiative for the Dundee Island Phase to Improvement Project. And L fifty, a resolution authorizing a grant application to the state of New Jersey Department of Environmental, Environmental Protection Green Acres Program for the Dundee Island Phase to Improvement Project. There's no need for executive session, and if any other Commissioners need to, uh, remove a resolution from the consent agenda, just please make that motion through the Director. Thank you.
Okay, um, I can do the amendment, I'm sorry.
Director, through you, just Matt, a very minor point on, uh, number forty-six, it's Jardim with an M. Uh, is the first name of the firm.
All right. We could note that, I'll, I'll fix it when we upload the late starter.
Minor matter.
Okay, uh, County Council, I can do the amendment and the four late, five late starters in one motion?
Uh, correct.
Okay. Any comment from the Commissioners before we move? Okay, I'll take a motion to amend L seven and to include late starters, L forty-six to L fifty.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Bartlett. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes. I'll take a motion to, uh, on the consent agenda, L one through L fifty and amendment to L seven.
Move it.
Uh, Deputy Director James.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazara. Any discussion?
And just for clarification, that, that's without L twenty-seven.
That'll be voted on separately, correct?
Yes, it's not in the consent agenda. County Commissioner, County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lapore.
Notes.
I'm sorry, Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, demoted me.
Sorry. Not a good thing, not a good thing.
I'll take a motion on L twenty-seven.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy, Deputy Director James.
I needed to get you to say that.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lazara. Role call?
County Commissioners Bar- uh, Art, uh, Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Recused.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes.
Director, just for clarification, B- Best, were you having technical problems and where, I did not hear you with L one through L fifty?
Yes, I was having technical problems. I, I say yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, other new business?
Uh, Director. You got a debt service statement, uh, and then a bond ordinance, Pat. You want to do those? Do we have something to Twitter?
No, uh, Director, we are on receipt of the filed supplemental debt statement from the CFL.
Okay, and, um, bond ordinance twenty twenty-one, dash, oh, five?
Provide, a bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of various election equipment by and in the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey appropriating ten million and seven hundred thousand, therefore, and authorizing ten million and one hundred and sixty-five thousand bonds or notes of the county to finance part of the cost thereof.
Motion to approve bond ordinance twenty twenty-one, dash, oh, five on first reading.
I'll move it.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Bartlett, I believe. Role call?
Director, through you, if we, before the roll, I just would like to, uh, comment a, a little bit about this. Obviously, with the early voting, uh, it has kind of sped up our decision-making, uh, to purchase new machines. The new machines will cost somewhere around eight million dollars for Passaic County. The other two point seven million dollars are additional costs, which will be reimbursed by the state of New Jersey. Um, once the Governor's budget is passed, they have put, at least tentatively, it put sixty million dollars in the budget with the ability for the county to come back for an additional ten million if it's needed, uh, to cover the cost of the early voting legislation that was adopted. So, we have to obviously spend the money uh, before we get reimbursed, which is why the additional two point seven million dollars is included in this bond ordinance.
Okay. Uh, we have a motion, we have a second. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, need a motion on the personnel?
Uh, move personnel agenda.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, need a motion on the bills list?
Remove the bills list.
Motion made by Deputy Director James, second by Commissioner Lazara. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, motion to adjourn?
I move it. Second.
Made by Commissioner Lazara, second by Deputy Director James. Role call?
County Commissioners Okter.
Yes.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
Deputy Director James.
Yes.
Director Lapore.
Yes, uh, good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Be safe. Bye, guys.
Thank you.